I want to welcome everybody to our May work session for May 10th at 4:00 PM. If you would, please stand for the pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda in front of us. Is there any recommended changes to the agenda?
No recommended changes.
All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda that's in front of us?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cleveland?
Second.
Second by Ms. Morrissey, all in favor? All right, unanimous. The first item on our presentation and discussion items is the student connection with Leann Rice, Sarah Taylor, Kimberly Bennett, and Todd Shirley.
There we go. Well, good afternoon. We're pleased to be able to share with you what we are doing to help our students feel connected. At our recent strategic planning meetings, we heard loud and clear from teachers, parents, community members, but most importantly, our students, about the needs that they have, not only for their academics, but also their emotional health. And so, we want to talk about what we're doing to support them. We hear frequently from our superintendent that the best schools are ones where homeschool and community partner together to support our students. They're our most precious resource. And so, building these strong relationships with our students in each of those places, at our schools, in our community, and at homes, help them feel that sense of connectedness and know that they are cared for and that they are important. And so, we'd like to share some of our thoughts today. If I can get this to move. There we go. As always, we want to connect to our board governance goals, and specifically, goals one, two, and four are going to address what we're talking about today. Safety for students and staff, our alignment to the learner profile, and making our large schools feel smaller. As I mentioned, our new strategic plan that you all approved at our last board meeting, there are five overall goals. We feel that three of those in particular are going to refer to student connectedness. The first goal, social emotional health, also culture, climate, and community, and then the learner experience. Specifically, when we talk about connection with our students, we want our students to be safe. We want them to feel safe physically, emotionally, and intellectually. And Todd Shirley is going to talk a little bit more with you about how we do that here in Forsyth County. We also want our students to come to school. If they're not here, we can't connect with them. We can't help them learn and grow. And so, Sarah Taylor is going to talk a little bit about what we're doing to encourage our students to feel connected and want to come to school. We also want each of our students to be known and to have a sense of purpose. We do so much with arts and athletics and CTAE, but we want to make sure that every single student is known and has that sense of purpose and connection. And Dr. Bennett will be talking a little bit about that with you. We also want our students to have the support they need to access their learning. And I'll share some things that we're doing across departments to make sure, no matter what challenges our students face, that their learning needs are being met. And finally, we want all of our students to be respected and to be respectful. And Ms. Taylor will talk a little bit about what we're doing to help with that. So let's start off with Mr. Shirley.
We, as a department, are always so honored that goal number one is the safety and security of our students, staff, visitors, anyone in our building. And we do take that very, very seriously. The Department of Operations, which includes not only school safety, but also transportation and food services, works very hard to ensure the safety and security of all those students. We begin with a very proactive approach to school safety. Looking at the programs that we run, we currently have approximately 45 officers. Now, a lot of schools and a lot of districts, those officers are there for show. They don't work as hard as our officers do to build relationships. That is number one priority of our School Resource Officer Program. Build relationships with the kids, build relationships with the admin team, and the staff. Every officer that is placed in the Forsyth County school system is hand-selected by Steve Hahn and myself, as well as representatives from the sheriff's office. Those officers have to match the climate and the culture of the school that we're going to place them in, and to me, that is the most important thing that we can do with those officers. We continue to expand our positive behavioral interventions and supports to our schools. There will be 27 schools next year. Three are onboarding, and we do have a number of schools that we're in discussions with right now. As you know and have heard me talk about PBIS before, it is the importance of building a structure within the school, a foundation, so that the kids, when they come to school, they will have that structured foundation, and it will completely change the discipline in the school. What we are seeing right now is a reduction in office discipline referrals in every one of the PBIS schools we have, and that is our ultimate goal. It also makes our teachers a lot happier, too, to see that structure. We are very pleased to partner with special education and mindset training. We have done this now for a few years. Sarah Taylor can articulate mindset much better than I can, but it is a program that we utilize district-wide. Really, two components of it, both a verbal and a physical de-escalation of students that are approaching the moment of getting completely out of control. A lot of people associate mindset with only a special education student or classroom. We've expanded that. We now teach mindset to front-office receptionists. We teach mindset to cafeteria workers. And with Mike Satterfield's wonderful work in transportation, we are teaching mindset to our bus drivers, the verbal part, because we want those people to be able to de-escalate our kids and not let things get out of control. And as you know, probably one of the most important programs we run out of our office, the Student Advocacy Specialist Program. With your gracious permission, we expanded that to eight people. We are covering every high school in the district, traditional and non-traditional, as well as all of our middle schools and elementary schools. I want to share some information from those Student Advocacy Specialists to highlight the importance of the work that we're trying to do. Currently, at this time in the district, our SASs are following over 1,400 students. That is statistics from almost two weeks ago. That is 2.7% of our population, and those are students that have expressed concerns about harming themselves or others. We are over 5,700 referrals this year to the SAS. That means teachers have reached out to them, parents have reached out, admin have reached out. Admin have said, "We feel like we've got a kid in trouble." We have an absolutely wonderful partnership with Student Support Services, working with social workers, working with school counselors, working with administrators to support this wonderful work, and, might I say, a very, very unique program.
Let me just add to that if I could, Todd, if you don't mind. This is not just a trend in Forsyth County schools. This is a state, national trend. I hear this at every meeting I go to when I talk to former fellow superintendents, is the number of referrals have increased dramatically. You know, we attribute it, obviously, to dealing with the pandemic for a couple of years, and a lot of places, kids were out of school sometimes for a year or longer and trying to re-acclimate students who were not in school. Were spending lots of time with technology and devices and not socializing in person. And now that most kids are back to school, it's getting them back to doing school the way we did school before the pandemic. So, when you see these numbers, they are concerning, and I'm grateful as well that we have our Student Advocacy Specialists and a great team of counselors and social workers that work with our kids. But this is very typical, not only in Georgia, but throughout the entire nation. Our Student Advocacy Specialist Program is unique, though, and we're getting more and more calls. We had Fayette County Schools up here a few weeks ago. They're going to be implementing this program in their school system, probably looking to hire two or three for next year. Sheriff Freeman and I, you guys know this, we met at the governor's mansion, and we shared what we're doing in Forsyth County schools with the governor, and he was very interested. In fact, he even made reference to it while he was here a couple of weeks ago. So, we're getting a lot of positive feedback about what we're doing. But again, as Todd said, thank you for supporting this. It has made a huge difference in the lives of many kids.
And finally, I want to highlight a statistic that, even though it may be a little bit alarming, it's going to further enhance the need for the wonderful work that the three ladies behind me are going to talk about in just a minute. These are example, well, not examples, but these are statistics from our student discipline, and the statistics stopped approximately a week and a half ago. If you look at the last bar on the top left, we are probably around 220 tribunals already for this school year, which surpasses the 2018-19 school year. If you look statistically at those numbers, you're going to be running probably 70 to 85, 70 to 80, 85% drugs and alcohol, and the remaining of those are probably going to be threats, intimidations to both persons, school, and also pornography. So, we need the things that these ladies are going to be talking about. I'm going to turn it over now to Ms. Sarah Taylor.
All right. We're going to talk about wanting to come to school. As a mother, I know that my daughter enjoys going to school, and I hope that she wants to go to school because she's there for over seven hours a day. We all want our students to be excited and inspired to join their peers each day to collaborate and learn. Not only do we want our students to want to come to school, but we want our parents and families to see our schools as welcoming and inviting. How do we intentionally go about doing this? First of all, our vertical teams host many family events throughout the school year to engage and invite parents to the schools. Many of these events are hosted at the high school, which gives families of students of elementary and middle school students to see the building and get comfortable with it and get to know that staff. At three of our high schools, we are building a framework of support around the concept of community schools. In highlighting one of the community school supports, we see an increase in wraparound services. These are coordinated services and supports that target academic and non-academic student articulated barriers to achievement. These services may include tutoring, mini sessions on financial literacy, counseling, unrestricted access to food and supplies for their family. One more, one of our new strategic plans under the learner experience is the increase in student achievement. We will be working closely with our schools and our professional learning communities to provide resources and tools for our teachers to increase this engagement. We have already started this work by collecting student voice, by conducting student empathy interviews in several of our schools. We ask the students questions about their school experience and what brings them the highest level of engagement. And then, over the last six years, we have implemented ASPIRE program for our students with disability. ASPIRE is designed to develop self-determination and executive functioning skills in the following areas such as problem-solving, self-evaluation, choice-making, decision-making, and goal-setting. When the students and the parents are, when the students present their ASPIRE activities and the parents, to the parents and the school teams, it is immensely powerful and keeps the focus, student-centered. So, one of the graphs that I have put in there, sort of why this work is so important, is we just pulled out one data element that we wanted to share with you, and one is the referrals for our social workers. As you can see, over the past five years, our referrals have been making a steady gain. If we had the same number of referrals second semester as we did first semester, we'll reach over 5,000 referrals this school year. We also want, we also watch our attendance and dropout data closely. Over the past few years, we have made some progress in addressing attendance concerns. However, we still need to focus on this area to reduce the percentage even more. The number of trinacy cases filed in court remain around the 40s, but of course, 1920 data was impacted by COVID. We also see an increase in our students having more social anxiety and difficulty getting into the school building and/or to class. We currently have identified 67 student cases of school refusal due to anxiety. According to a recent study of our research of JAM Pediatrics, one in five students experience anxiety while one in four have suffered from depression. So that is our why. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bennett.
Thank you, Sarah. Good afternoon, close to evening. So, Sarah talked about our why, and I also want to talk about our why. Why are we talking about belonging? Why do we care if students belong? Why do we care about that? Because if students don't feel a sense of belonging, if staff don't feel a sense of belonging, they are less engaged, they are the negative. So, for adults, they are the negative ones that are not engaged, and they bring everyone else down. For our students, if they're not engaged and they don't feel a sense of belonging or connectedness, then they're not engaging, and they're the ones that may be doing things that we don't want them to do. Suicide is the second leading cause of death. Suicide is the second leading cause of death among our students, and that's nationally. And that's why we need to care about this, and that's why I am really excited to share this information with you and that we have the opportunity to talk about this. And I only have one slide because I talk a lot, so I figured I'd spend less time clicking and more time talking. But Dr. Beard, and I promise I'll be tight, terse, and to the point. So, a sense of belonging and a sense of connectedness, just to make sure we're on a level playing field and we all have the same mindset with regard to the terminology. When we look at risk factors, we're talking about individual risk factors, environmental risk factors, or characteristics, or conditions that impact that student's behavior. That's what we're talking about in terms of our risk factors. And I'm not trying to talk down, but I want to make sure we're on the same page because in education, we throw around so many different terms. With regard to protective factors, we're, again, looking at individual environmental or characteristic conditions or behaviors that reduce the effects of stress. School connectedness, and this is just one of many. In preparation for this, I just went online and researched different definitions. This is the one that I found the most. School connectedness is the belief by students that adults and peers in the school care about their learning as well as about them as individuals. Who doesn't want someone to care about them? It's really simple, but our students are not feeling connected. They're more into the screens and looking down and unable to connect with people. You see people out at a restaurant, and they're not even looking at each other, they're in their phones. Well, that's trickling down to our students. So, what are we in Forsyth doing to help our students feel connected? We have several programs. My colleagues talked about a few of the things. In our department, and these are just a few of the programs, we have Sources of Strength, Signs of Suicide, our school-based mentoring program, and our mindfulness program. So, to stay on track, I'm going to start to read a little bit. Our Sources of Strength Program, that program looks at eight protective factors, and they focus on resilience. And again, resilience will mitigate or reduce those risk factors. And one of the things the research tells us is that one caring adult can mitigate several, I think it was four, risk factors for students. So you think about it, somebody standing at the door in the morning, "Hey, Tom, how are you doing? What happened last night? How was your baseball game? Lindsay, did you make the soccer team?" You know, things like that, just understanding. "Hey, Sandy, I noticed you weren't at school yesterday. Is everything okay?" Just calling students by name. "Hey, she knows my name. I'm brand-new." Checking in on them, little, simple things like that. When I first got here, I was over the moon. Dr. Beard knew my name. I was like, "Oh, he knows my name!" Those, I'm in my 50s, and that made me excited. So, those are the things that we connect with as adults, and that's what our kids connect with. So, we all want to belong and have that sense of fitting in. And those are the things that Sources of Strength focuses on. And they do this using our student peers. It's not led by adults. Our counselors will select students that our students look up to. These are peers that are valued in the school, and they're not necessarily the athletes or the really popular kids, but they're the students that may be what I call a silent leader or a quiet storm. Those are the ones that they select. And some of them may be athletes, it's nothing against athletes or anything, but it just depends, because sometimes we do have a bias against our athletes, I want to stick up for athletes. And then, we pair them with adult advisors, and these students, together, they go through a series of programs, and I won't go into all of it, but it has two models, one for elementary and one for secondary. And in Forsyth, we currently have three elementary schools. Chad Vickery, Mashburn, and Chesty is coming on next year, I believe. And I won't go through all of them. Seven middle schools and four high schools that are currently using this program. And the program is used nationally with colleges. They use it in colleges, rural, urban, tribal settings, so it is something that has used and been effective over and over again. And we're fortunate to have, actually, our facilitator, I believe, is here, Lindsay Adams. I say Lindsay Adams, gave you a new job. So, Sources, again, I said it was evidence-based, and basically, it talks about suicide risk and depression. And sometimes we think, "Oh, our babies don't need that." They do. They do, because they're talking about it. Let's give them the appropriate information and research behind it so that they understand what they need to do and how they need to address it and how they can help each other. So, and that's just designed for, we have a program for six through 12, and I know I'm rushing through it because my time is lining up. We have a school-based mentoring program, which Lindsay also runs, and that program started in 1998, and it's continued to expand. The number of mentors that we had did fall off, obviously, during COVID a little bit because people were not able to come into the building, and it, the strength of the program is actually being face-to-face, having that contact with the students. But we currently have, prior to the pandemic, we had 700 active mentors. Currently, we have 268. So if you're out there, we would love to sign you up to be a mentor. Shameless plug. So we have three types of mentors. We have staff mentors, student mentors, and community mentors, and they participate in our school-based mentoring program. And again, they do training. This past, I think, two months ago, we did youth mental health training with them, and that's another program where we teach people that work with youth to identify, understand, and respond to the signs and symptoms of suicide and sub-suicide and substance use. Signs of suicide and substance use, mental health. And I think I've covered all of those pieces. I want to make sure I cover everything without going over my time. And then, last but not least, our mindfulness program. I'm really excited about our mindfulness program. I had an opportunity to participate in this last year. It's a three-day program for our teachers, and it is a phenomenal program that we provide for our teachers free of charge. One of the things, this, as far as I know right now, we are one of the schools providing it for free. Parents typically pay for something like this, and we are so fortunate to have this program. And we have had so many testimonies. When I was in the classroom, I heard people, Ashley was telling me about people saying, "This has changed my life. It's changed my life." And I was like, "Okay, let me see what this is about." And I thought I was meditating before. I thought I was doing it really well, but I really wasn't, because I was brushing my teeth and looking at my calendar. No, I took that three-day class, and it really has changed the quality of my practice. And for the teachers that participate in it, there are tears. If you ever want to take it or you plan to take it, just be prepared for tears. They're crying because it's changing their classroom, the culture of their classroom. For our students, self-regulation, they are able to stop and breathe and control their behavior. I've tested it out at home. It works with young ones that have some problems with self-control. I know firsthand. So, it's a program, also, it calms anxiety for teachers and students. It's something that's universal. So it's not only a gift for the classroom, it's a gift for the families and the teachers. And we're very fortunate that our superintendent and as our board members, you support that, so I thank you for that. And Ashley, I believe, is here as well. Ashley? So, I also brought some letters for you from our students, because I had a chance to see the students in action. I'm a former kindergarten teacher, and that's one of my favorite grades, and I love their work. We have today third-grade students, and they wrote letters to Ashley, and these are the cutest letters. A lot of love in there. There's a lot of "I love yous" in here. But you all have an opportunity, if you have an opportunity to read those letters, please do so. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Leann, because I know that I've gone over a little bit, but I do get excited talking about this topic, so.
It's important. So now, we've provided a safe learning environment. We've gotten our kids to want to come to school. We've called them by name and given them a sense of purpose. Now they're ready to learn. But not every child has everything they need to be ready to learn. And so, that's where we come in and make sure those students have the supports they need. You know, when we shut down back in March of 2020, we realized many of our students and their families didn't have adequate access to technology. We are very grateful to the Morrow Foundation and our BYOT work in helping us provide hotspots and Chromebooks. We provided over 7,000 hotspots to families here in Forsyth County, showing the need that we have to make sure that students have that access when we do go online in those type of situations. We're lucky now that the Education Foundation will be taking over that work and continuing to make sure that our families have the access they need. We also have students who may need additional support with reading or writing with different disabilities, and so, our special ed department provides a lot of assistant technology. In addition to that, our teaching and learning department provides every child access to something called Google Read and Write. And so, it provides the ability for text to be read out loud, to have predictive writing text, and so, no matter whether a child has an identified disability, if they're struggling with reading or writing, they do have access to supports for that. In addition, our district funds ESOL coaches, Title III coaches, special education coaches that work with our teachers and make sure that our teachers know instructional strategies to work with students who have different learning challenges and make sure those needs are being met in the classroom. And then, we have liaisons that work with students that are experiencing foster care or migrant or homeless situations. And amazingly, right now, we have over 800, well, we have 881 homeless students. We have 19 students with families that are migrant. We have 90 students that are in foster care. So we have a lot of students that are experiencing challenges beyond what an average student in the classroom would experience, but we are able to provide supports and services like tutoring to help mitigate those experiences and those gaps in their education. When we do have students that struggle academically, we follow what's called the multi-tiered system of support, and this is something that the special education department, the student support department, and teaching and learning all collaborate together to support our students and our teachers with interventions and strategies to help students, no matter where they are. This is a pyramid that we use to show there's three different tiers of support. Most of our students only need that tier-one support. That's your regular, everyday instruction in the classroom. But we do have students who might need more small group or individualized or more intensive interventions to help them succeed. Currently, we have 22 of our students who need that additional support in reading and 18% of our students who need additional support in mathematics, just to meet the proficiency in our Georgia standards of excellence. You can see, too, we don't like to label our students. We don't say we have a tier-two student or a tier-three student. Every student has strengths and areas of need, and so, we want to be able to address those areas of needs, whether the student is eligible for the gifted program or a special education program. We want to make sure that whatever those areas of strength are, we're utilizing those to leverage their ability to be successful, but we're also helping support them in those areas of need. And finally, Sarah is going to talk about respect.
To be respected and be respectful. As Todd shared with you earlier, we have 27 students, I mean, 27 schools that are going to be PBIS next year. Some of those schools are at the tier-two level PBIS, which includes providing additional supports for individual students to respect where their current needs are. We also have some schools that are doing restorative practices such as Little Mill or Riverwatch, and we also have several elementary schools that are doing morning meetings within their classroom. Both of these techniques are proactively building the skills and the relationships students need when challenges arise. Students learn how to communicate respectfully with their peers during class dialogue. All of our schools also give back to the community through service projects and volunteer opportunities for students and staff. Students learn about responsibility and being accountable as contributing citizens in their community. In last month's board meeting, you heard from North Forsyth High School, where they highlighted a lot of the service work they're doing within their community. They also included, spoke about their food capture and recycle program. Students are learning to be respectful to the environment and not allowing food to go to waste. Through our digital citizenship- Through our di- digital citizenship instruction, we teach students how to use online resources in a responsible and respectful manner. With all of these opportunities, we, uh, know the following, that we must challenge ourselves to see through others' lens. Diverse, diversity strengthens our relationships in schools and community. And we have a responsibility to prepare and inspire our students and staff and others to be inclusive in our schools. So one piece of data I wanted to share came from our Georgia Student Health Survey. Um, as you can see, in, um, 2020, when we last took this survey, we had 33% of our middle schools and 32% of our high schools who strongly to somewhat disagreed that students treat each other with respect. Um, we want this number to decrease over time. Due to COVID, the Georgia Department of Ed did not require the Georgia Student Health Survey. However, this upcoming school year, it will be reinstated and we will have some new baseline data to work from.
So hopefully you've heard today, um, some of the things we're doing to help our students feel connected. One of the things I'm most proud about is that in our district, we don't look at this as one person's responsibility. You've heard from four different departments today. And hopefully you've seen the interconnectedness that we have, not only in our clothing, but also in the work that we do and that we are striving to support our students no matter what their needs are. We own all of these students. And I don't think there would be a better example than the, the picture I'm showing you right now. I started the presentation by talking about how much our schools and communities and families need to work together for the benefit of our students. Last week, I had the, the honor of attending a Rotary Club meeting where one high school student from each of our high schools was honored with what was called a Challenge Scholarship. You're seeing a picture here of some of the recipients with their school counselors. And in each school, the counselors nominated a student who has really shown perseverance and resilience through different challenges that they've overcome. The stories that these students shared were so incredibly touching. And every single child talked about the relationships they built, the support that they had, not only from home, that was a huge part of their support, but also from the school and the community. And so there was a student who suffers from alopecia. And she talked about being in the middle of the pandemic and struggling with her sense of identity and how her counselor and her friends and her family helped her through that. There was another student who was diagnosed with non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. And she thought she'd beat it and she didn't. And she went through a, a clinical trial and now she's cancer-free. And she started her own foundation to support and raise money for the Lymphoma and Leukemia Society. We have a student who talked about losing her mother two years ago and the challenge that she's faced as a teenage girl without her mom guiding her and leading her through life. But the support that she's found from her counselors, her teachers, her family, and her friends. And we heard from another student who talked about some of the social and academic challenges that he faced. And he was, uh, in danger of dropping out of school. But his counselors, his teachers, his friends, his family helped him succeed. And he is now getting ready to graduate. Each of these students has won a scholarship to go on to college and next steps. And it was a tremendous testimony to the work that we do together in our school system, in our community, again, to support our most precious resource, which is our students. What questions can we answer for you?
Any questions, comments?
I don't know where to start. I just, I'm so, you, I love the way that you're, all the different topics you talked about. They're not that complex. They're really pretty basic about connectivity. It's not that deep a thought. It's just basic human kindness and connectivity. So from, and what you're doing impacts the students, but I liked the way you kept talking about it, impacts the teachers. But even at one level, you're talking about the students being able to control their behaviors, that it makes it better for the kids at home. And, and we've seen that, uh, we had some students here earlier in the year that the parents, the parents, I remember coming up after the meeting and the parents were like, I'm, this has affected their whole life. And their parents were in tears that their home life is better. So we're making an impact on just the children being able to behave and control their behavior at home as well. And so what your changes you're doing are pretty straightforward. But they're impacting their whole lives, so teachers, students at home, so it's great stuff.
I have a story. I know y'all can't believe I have a story. But today, as we were walking back up to the office, Jeff asked this little girl, she was a sixth grader, and he said, well, how's your school year been? And then we didn't have to say another word.
We did not.
She talked to us and you know what a long walk it was. But one thing she said that I just loved at the end, she said, you know, she said, at this school, I'm so glad I came because I feel like that no matter what I want to do, everybody here says, how can I help you? Nobody says, oh, you're too young for that, or I don't think you need to do that till you get older. It's how can we help you do, you know, accomplish what you want to? And I just thought, gosh, that is so great that she feels like that. And she was so confident, she'd never met us before, and she was so confident talking to us. And it was just, it was really, it was neat to hear from a sixth grader's perspective, to hear that.
That sense of connection that she evidently has.
Everybody here is just, what can we do to help you do anything you, you want to do, she said. And I thought that was just so great.
Well, another, I'm sorry.
It was nice to see, I mean, uh, Lindsey Shadburn shared with me today the sources of strength. And I was able to review that a little bit because I wanted to add something we're doing to the presentation I'll give in just a little bit. And so they were doing it for me, I found out. It's just very much a timing thing. And it was, uh, interesting to see we're working in a lot of areas, trying to make better decisions, trying to live life better, trying to help these kids, maybe even help their parents in some cases. Because maybe they're starting to get the keys to the kingdom, hopefully. And we'll just keep, that's for us to support. So we have to know that it's happening out there so that we can work on our support for these things.
I was going to give a quick testimonial too. A couple of years ago, when we started piloting, uh, mindfulness with, with Ashley, I had a parent at Coal Mountain stop me and said, you know, you guys know my child at school, how disruptive she can be. Well, trust me, that doesn't just happen at school, that happens at home too. And she's, and said, now that she's learned some strategies, some mindfulness, she said, our entire family life has changed for the better. We, we're, we're more connected at home. We don't have nearly the upset, the angst anymore. And it's all because my child has learned how to deal with some emotional issues, some anger and things like that. So just so powerful. Yeah.
I went to, um, with my son, being a student in the school system, he, uh, he connects with a lot of teachers. And the relationship he has with the teachers and the outcome is, they're, they're like together, they're equal. If you have a really good teacher who cares about the students and connected with the students, the, the students are going to feel that and they're going to succeed. Um, and we've seen that. And I know that we are very blessed in our community to have a lot of outside organizations that help us. Um, I was part of Whisper and Whisper's been a great outside organization that's come in and helped. But going through some of their focus groups, there's a large population of our students that the only adult interaction they have is when they come to school.
Right.
And so being that connected and having that is, is very beneficial and, and we see that. I actually went to Sani Elementary School and, um, Derek Hershey, Mr. Hershey is, uh, has a whole program put together on how Sani can reconnect with the community because of COVID. Nobody was connected. Now he wants to re-engage everybody. And, uh, some of the programs and what they're coming with, the mentoring part of it, what they're doing in Sani is great. So I think that this is all in line and falling in what we need to do. So thank you to the four of you and everybody else for working hard on this.
Yeah, and to that point, Wes, and the reason we wanted to do this tonight, you know, you guys adopted the strategic plan last month. And really the theme of the strategic plan was connection and connectivity. And wanted you to see some things that we've already had in place to make sure our students and staff, community feels connected and that work will continue from here.
Well, I think it's a struggle that everybody's seen. And even corporations and organizations are having groups come together to say, hey, how can we get back into the workplace? How can we do this? And so I think this is, this is perfect.
Thank you for your support.
Good job.
All right. Our next item on the list is the 23 tentative budget with Mr. Larry Hamel.
Good evening. I didn't get the, uh, memo from Leanne, so I didn't wear my charcoal suit. I'll do the best I can. All right. So today I'm going to present the initial, uh, 23 budget. And with the first page, we just want to point some highlights out to everybody, uh, the board and also in the audience. So for population-wise, uh, starting with 23, our population is going to be slightly over 54,000. That will make us the fifth largest school system in the state of Georgia. We've surpassed, uh, Clayton County and APS to get to that position. We have decided that as a school system, it makes sense for us to move all of our hourly employees up to $15 minimum an hour. Also to provide a step increase and a 1% quota for 23. And we'll see those, and we'll also with positions at schools, uh, most, excuse me, most of the growth positions being at the school level, and we'll see that in another slide. Local revenues have increased based on inflation influences on sales. State revenues are steady and will be impacted by the governor's increase in teacher pay by 2000 with no austerity cuts. So we're fully funded this year by, uh, the governor and GDOE. The county tax digest continues to grow and has been influenced by the housing market increases due to inflation and low inventory. For this year, right now, the tax digest is estimated to grow by 20.32%. And you'll see how we use that in the next slides. For the eight consecutive year, um, we proposed a mileage rate to be 17.3. As part of, for this trying to get back to our, um, local community, we've talked about lowering our debt service mill by one full mill from 2.418 to 1.48. And we can cover that more in additional slides. The projected fund balance will be 14.99 or right up 15% for this budget. And, uh, we are once again the lowest per pupil cost school system in the state of Georgia for the largest 12 school systems. And we'll show that as well. If they had been continuing the, um, five-star efficiency rating last two years, they got rid of it. We would have gotten those awards the last two years, which would have made us, um, eight years in a row for that instead of just six. Any questions? All right, so we're going to dive into the meat of it. As you can see in front of you, you have a comparison between revenue and expenditures and fund balance going down. And across, we're going from the 23 budget to the 22 budget. And it will show you an increase, uh, by the different categories going across. Uh, also will show you a percentage of total of what that is as well. As you can see, last year, we had 508.8 million dollars in revenue projected. And we are on par for that. This year's budget, we're projecting 589 million point, excuse me, 589.8 million dollars in revenue. A large percentage of that's coming from the tax digest increase as well as the GDOE money we're getting for the teacher raises.
Is that a 99% collection rate for the local?
Yeah, not last year, we had 98.5, but based on the collection we've done the last two years, I moved up to 99. You'll see that later as well. On the, uh, expense side, you can see last year, our budget was 520 million dollars for expenditures. This year, we're projecting 578.5 million. Uh, that's an increase of almost 58.4 million dollars. Total increase to the budget as a total is 11.22%. And then above it, you'll see the breakdown percentage-wise of the different instructional categories and function categories as well. As you can see, instructions is still almost 72.3% of the total budget. Last year, we had a deficit built-in of about 11.3 million. And this year, we have a excess of about 11.3 million built into the budget. So what does that mean going forward? We started the year off with about 99.8 million dollars in undersigned fund balance. There was some assigned fund balance that would have put us over 100 million dollars, but that was, you know, inventory and some fixed assets in there as well for that. We're projected right now to add about 22 million dollars to the 99, uh, revenue over expenditures for 22 budget and end the year with about 122 million dollars. So what are we going to do with that 122 million? Well, first of all, we're going to add the 11.3, which we predict to have more revenue than expenditures. And then what, um, we have recommended to the board this year is, in order to drop the mileage rate by one mil, we were asking the board if they would reserve out 33 million dollars of the excess revenue, fund balance revenue to help us pay down that one mil. And then we would like to reserve another 13.5 for future supplements. If you do that together, that should give us a total of about 86.7 million dollars or right at 15% fund balance. Any questions? So to break it down even further from the first slide, what we've done here is we have the functions going down your left side. And across, we have a breakdown of that budget between salaries and benefits and operation expense. Again, with a percentage of the budget in the middle column there of the total expenditures. As you can see, the salaries and benefits portion of that 578.5 will be 511 million dollars. And our operation budget will be up to 60 point, 67, almost 67.5 million. Uh, and that's 11.22% increase. One thing I do want, a couple of things I want to point out to you, as you look at debt service, you can see that the increase in that percentage of that budget is 2,377,000%. And that's because we're picking up the, um, cost of the Alliance Academy again, that we didn't have the last two years. That was one thing we had to pick up in this year's budget. Uh, as a percentage, 23, we're looking at 88.34% for salary and benefits, 11.66 for operation expense. That's very in line where it was last year. Any questions? All right, we like to call these the Pac-Man slides because they look like a Pac-Man. As you can see, the instructional, the blue part, shows you that at 72%, that's a very large percentage of the total, uh, excuse me, the total budget you're looking at. And then you can see the other wedges of the pie as well and what the breakdown on that is. When we look at salaries and benefits, we have another Pac-Man chart here. And we're looking at, uh, the blue salary benefits versus the red operation. As you can see, we are definitely, um, salary benefit heavy in this budget. So what was been added to the budget on the salary side? Oops. I don't know why I can't see the bottom down there. The salary and benefits has about 272 positions being added to the school level for about 22.5 million dollars. On non-school base, we're adding only about 12 positions for 1.2. The total increase between those two categories is about 23.7 million dollars and about 284 positions. Below that, you can see that the new pay scales that we have asked you to approve to raise all the bottom paying, uh, people to $15 an hour, as well as a quota 1%, is going to be about 15.3 million dollars. That does include the teacher pay in there as well in that category. The step increase, what costs is about 5.1. And the total benefits will be about another $6 million increase, uh, just because of all the changes we've made. That's another 26.4 million dollars. Those two added together are about 50.1 million dollars. So total salary and benefits are going to buy that amount. Now, there's some non-salary benefit stuff we do add to the salary benefit section, but that stuff for like subpay, stuff like that, that normally doesn't show up on this. It doesn't go through the salary benefit projection. It goes through, it's added to the salary benefit salary column, but as a budget item, not as a, through the salary benefit projection. Does that make sense? Okay. Any questions on that? I'm sorry.
Just to go back on that screen, just for clarification, on the school-based positions, a lot of those would be growth positions because we have larger numbers of students. And over the last two years, with the austerity cuts from the state, because we were not fully funded from the get-go, we kind of had to hold back and be a little conservative on our growth. We didn't, you know, we didn't put as many out there. We tried to be careful, but now we, we're fully funded for the first time in two years. It's the third year. And then another is we're opening another new school. So that's why we have New Hope Elementary. So we've got custodian nurses, some of those positions are a new school opening up. So it's a mixture of we have more students and we have a new school opening up.
Yes, ma'am. Also, um, the EIP section there, the 15.5, that's because of changes in the law under how EIP is done. And then the ESOL population has increased dramatically. And of course, SPED Ed has the additional teachers they have to add to meet, uh, requirements for that as well. All right, so let's look at the revenue side of the budget. So as you can see here, we have a breakdown between the local and the state and a breakdown even further, what makes up those two amounts. We have a comparison from the 23 budget to the 22 budget. As you can see going across, your two biggest areas that you're seeing the increase in the budget are Avalorum at 47.9 million and then down below on the QB formula of 28.6. Now, when you look at that 28.6, I don't want you to be thrown off by saying that's a lot of money come from the state because that includes last year where we had austerity cuts and we don't have any here. So part of that's going to be the $2,000 we're getting from the governor. And part of that's going to be austerity cuts given back to us. That's why that number's so high. So in total, our revenue projection is going up almost 16%. If you go below, you'll see the tax revenue projection, uh, where the tax digest is now up to 20 billion dollars with about 3.5 billion in exemptions for a net total of 16.6 billion. And at the 17.3 mileage rate, that should generate a gross revenue of about 286.5 million dollars. million. We take out the commission percentage, 2.5.
Can you explain what that is? The commission 2.5?
The state of Georgia allows the tax commissioner to charge up to 2.5% as a collection rate for them collecting all the money from us. And usually, the tax commissioner's office use that money to fund their office for the full year.
Forsyth County's tax.
Correct. That should give us at a 99% collection rate about $276.5 million. Compared to last year, what we were about down, before, we were at about $16 billion last year. And based on a 99.8%, excuse me, 99, excuse me, 98.5 collection rate, we were predicting $228 million for a difference of 20.93. The reason that 20.93 is a little bit higher than the 20.32 is we actually did collect at almost 100% rate versus where we were the 98.5. So these are just budget numbers comparison year to year, not necessarily what was actually collected. If you look at the QB formula, we're projected to get 263, almost $264 million. Our midterm has gone back to normal, so we went ahead and put the $6 million in there to show what we predicted midterm. That would give us $269 million compared to last year. You can see that's $28.6 million increase, almost 11.87%. Any questions? This is just another pie chart to kind of give you a visual about how the state and local is. As you notice, the local's slowly been increasing every year since the last several, and we're now above 50% and below 50% for the state. This is a 2000 to 2022 listing of all the MO rates and the bond mileage. I'd like to point out, under 2022, you see the 17.3 that we're asking for and the 1.418 for the bond mileage. The last time the combined of these two was this low is all the way back in 2014 when it was 16.3 MNO, and it was 2.418 mileage. So we actually reduce it back to 2014 levels. This is the breakdown based on the 2021 data submitted to the state of Georgia through the DE46 and based off the 2021 auto report. As you can see here, that year, we were at 51,436 kids at $9,003.05 per child. And just to give you an idea, if you look at Atlanta Public School Systems, they're almost double what we spend in terms of what that is.
I heard today they're looking at a $1.4 billion budget.
That's pretty high.
That's. And we're looking at 585.
And these are not your numbers, these come from the state.
These come all from the state. In fact, I go to the state, there's a place where you can pull down every single county and every single school system and city school system, and then I compare the top 12 in the metro Atlanta area in the state of Georgia, and then I just put them in order of their, no, by their expenditures.
Oh, yeah.
And the size, you can see to the left.
This year, our budget was 520 million. Clayton County was 740 million. It's incredible.
Did that include the CARES?
That's just their basic MNO budget.
Lot of money.
Yeah, the CARES is on top of that.
All right, next screen. All right, so some of the next couple of screens, we're going to be showing you what we predict to happen with non-general fund budgets going forward. The school food services, you can see going down your left, you have revenues versus expenditures, beginning and ending fund balance, and then going across the top, you have 23 versus 22. Tim and I sit down and talked a lot about this budget over the last couple of months, went hemmed and hawed about a lot of things. So the two big areas you're going to see increases will be school nutrition workers and benefits. And that's because we are moving a lot of our school nutrition people from about $11, was it 90 cents, Tim?
That's where it comes.
Yeah, up to $15.15, including the 1% increase for the COLA. So that's a huge increase. That's typically, Cindy, was that 38%?
That's right.
Yeah, 38% increase for our school nutrition employees. So those two amounts right there, you can see are large. Also, after talking to Tim, we increased the food from 6.1 to 7.5. And Tim, that's about 12 to 13% increase in food costs? And we ought to keep it low because we're buying bulk, right?
That's right.
So that's what that's looking like. And so now you're seeing that we're going to increase our total expenses by almost $6 million because of those two main things. Everything else is pretty much holding steady. But we're only looking at about $2 million more in revenue, and that's because we're not quite sure what the reimbursement rate is going to be because they haven't officially come out. Correct, Tim?
That's correct.
All right. So we might even know to June what that number is. So we're just kind of, we're making estimated guesses on that. That in turn shows that we should have a deficit spend of about $3.6 million. Currently, our fund balance beginning of the year was about $4 million. Right now, we're predicted to have about $11.8 million coming in as extra revenue or expenditures, and that's because we're at 100% free and reduce revenue. And every child is...
What does that end, is that done yet?
It ends this.
No, it ends in the June 30th, right, Tim?
Well, it's got to be difficult, though, is predicting what the demand will be for purchasing for next year, because so many people have been gotten used to having that that didn't necessarily need that privilege, whatever you want to call it. But they might now enjoy that, so are they going to be willing to pay for that next year? So, yeah, so it'll be, but how do you predict what you need to purchase? It's going to be a real, but I kind of think people like the convenience of not having to do that, so it'd be interesting that you...
Well, I'll say this.
Difficult prediction.
What we make and provide our students actually might be cheaper for them to buy than what they can go out and buy themselves and bring to school to eat.
Well, we've all seen our grocery bills go up, so...
Right. So we'll see how that goes. So with that $11.8 million revenue over expenditures for 22, we're projected to have about $15.8 million in fund balance. We're going to spend about $3.6, I'll bring it down to 12, too. We predict we'll probably be in the same circumstance for the next three years, and we'll build that, we will end up using that $12 million over the next three years, almost act down to zero where it should be. But that's the goal on that right there. We will know a lot more after July 1st, and we'll know exactly what direction we're headed in with that. Any questions? All right, debt service. This debt service sheet I'm showing you does have the one mil in collections removed from it. So this is at a 1.418 mil collection rate. Typically, that $24.6 million you see on the revenues is closer to $34, $36 million. So it is at 24.6. The expenditures are the expenditures that regardless of where the revenue is coming from, it's all the debt service we have to pay next year. And then you can see we're going to transfer in the last little bit of SPOLOX 5 money that we had authorized to spend on that coming in. You won't see SPOLOX 6 until the year after that. We started the year off with about $51.5 million in fund balance. Starting in '22, we should spend about $35 million based on what we're looking at, and that should reduce our fund balance down to 16.5. The $33 million reserves, we will probably spend the first part of that in '24 to help support this fund. We won't need it next year, we'll just keep it in reserves and earn interest on that money, but we'll start using it in '24.
Because in the next year, it'll just be the interest payment, that's not that much.
Well, no, we'll have, we'll have $54 million to pay, but we won't have enough money coming in plus what the fund balance is to make all those payments. We'll start drawing down on that $33 million reserve amount we have in general fund. Any questions? All right, last screen. The other thing we're going to show you is special revenue funds and capital projects funds. In the special revenue funds, we already, we've already gone on the school nutrition budget, but it's included in these numbers as well. The only reason we're doing it is because when these audits come out to you, they're broken down by special revenue fund and capital projects fund. So we want to show it the same way to you that is in the audit. So if you look under special revenue funds, all the way down to school food services expenditures, you'll see the $25 million we saw earlier in the first screen. And then if you look up here, you'll see federal sources and local sources, all that is up to $32 million. That's including school nutrition revenue coming in as well. So, and the other part of this, if you take out the 25.6, the other $10.2 million is made up of Title I, Title II, Title III, SPED Ed, and all these other little audits, these federal little programs we have out there. Leanne, do we still have homeless and some of those other small ones? Yeah, they're not very big though, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And that makes up that $10.2 million. So in total, you're looking at that $3.6 million expenditures over revenue, that is what school nutrition is, and then the fund balance, there's all school nutrition. In theory, all your federal programs, whatever you spend, you draw in revenue, and you don't have any fund balance at beginning and end of the year. Capital projects, this category here includes mostly SPOLOX 6 collections going forward. It also shows the amount being transferred out for SPOLOX 5 to debt service for a total of $59.6 million. We project about $80 million in expenditures next year, and we should end the year up with about $93 million in fund balance after starting the year with almost $114 million. That $93 million is made up of four different buckets. SPOLOX 4, just a tiny bit of money left. SPOLOX 5, that we have money left over from the collections, we're not done spending yet. SPOLOX 6, and then what's left over from the 18 and 20 bonds are almost paid off. By the time we get done with 23 being done, 4 should be gone. There'll be a little bit of 5 left, we'll be deep into 6, and most of the 18 and 20 money should be gone as well. So we'll clear most of that up. Any questions? And that is the 2023 initial budget. And I'll be more than welcome to take any questions you have.
Well, before we do that, just, again, this is the first deep dive for the five of you to look at our budget proposal. We will not be asking for an actual adoption until June, so we have some time for you to go through it. And so in the meantime, obviously, if you have questions tonight, we'll entertain those. But between now and next couple of weeks, if you need to come in and meet with Larry or myself or us together, and we can go through any of this in detail with you. With that, we'll just turn over any questions or comments you might have tonight.
Any questions, comments?
I just want to thank Larry. I know that we've had lots of thoughts and questions, and I really want to appreciate Dr. Bearden and Mr. Hamel for all the work and the questions that you've taken from us so far. And it's been a lot.
My pleasure.
I know you've spent a lot of time, so thank you.
No, I think that if you look back, you said you were going back, collectively, they're going back to the 2014 mil rate. But also, if you look at it, it's, we've never reduced the debt service mil rate a point before. And so that's the first time in history it's going down a point. Maybe talk a little bit about the hourly employee that we're bumping up, who that is. The other thing is, is that...
Maybe Dr. Sloan.
Yeah, and, because I want to see about the substitutes also, make sure substitutes were in there. And then the other thing is, maybe explain a little bit that the home values have gone up statewide, not just in Forsyth County, right? So this is statewide increase, but so has services, materials, and consumables. Talk a little bit about that.
Sure. And before Cindy comes up or Jeff, talk about that part. What I can say is this, everything you read, Wall Street Journal, Zillow, wherever you go, all these articles are out there about how when that pandemic hit, everybody went home, everybody wanted a bigger home, or they wanted another place out in the country to go, or they were leaving the cities, and a lot of pressure was putting on the housing market to buy, and people were buying cash only. I'm sure you've heard about people showing up and offering 50, 60, 70,000 over whatever people were asking. All that activity for the last two years has finally caught up to the tax digest. And we are not the only county in the state of Georgia. If you reach out to almost every single county in the state of Georgia, they're seeing anywhere from 15 to 20% increases statewide. Then if you start reading articles, we're not even that bad. Miami, Phoenix, LA, and one other city, I can't remember off the top of my head, are seeing increases as much as 38 and 40% in the homing prices.
I see.
Across the board. So with that going on, it was only a matter of time that all this activity would finally catch up to the tax digest. So that's happened nationwide and statewide. Everybody's seeing the same stuff. In fact, there was an article the other day in Wall Street Journal that was saying that tax digresses across the nation were up $289 billion across the United States. So that just kind of gives you an idea how crazy that is.
And then services, how much is that?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry about that. So when I sit down with everybody in their departments, I always like to try to go out there and look and see what the market's doing compared to what they're asking. So like when I sat down with Mr. Satterfield, I went out to a trade magazine that was online, and I downloaded it, and it showed all their different parts and what the increase in the parts were. So when Michael Satterfield came to me, he was like, I need 10, 12, 15% increase in my repair and maintenance budget. And you can see tires were up 10%, spark plugs were up 11. It was just amazing to see how all the different categories went up and down. Of course, with the market being tight as it is and the global market being so interactive and things are just like getting to us, that's putting stress on cost. The main cost right now you see that's kind of developing into a lot of expenses is travel expenses because of fuel costs going up so much. That's another thing about this budget. I think we have, did we put an 80% increase in diesel in our budget?
I don't think it was that high. I want to say it was probably 60.
Okay, that sounds about right. And then propane's up 60%, and then gasoline's up about 40 or 50% in our budget, and that's because we can buy at bulk. I mean, if you, if you're Joe Schmo going to the gasoline station, you're seeing 100% increase in your diesel, but we can buy at a little bit lower price because we're buying in bulk. Food's up 15, 20%, depending on what you're buying. If it's chicken, I know it's up 25% because we eat a lot of chicken in our house. With steak, it's up 30%. You're just seeing it across the board everywhere. You can't get away from it.
Michael, what did you say cabinet, you were paying what for diesel at the beginning of the year, and what are you paying now?
Back in office, we were paying $20 a gallon for the last, the last shift, we got $4.65.
So, there you go. Yeah.
Well, and I think that's, you know, yes, property values went up, but also the cost and operation of everything went up, if not even almost equivalent.
Right.
Exactly.
They're almost like they eliminate each other just because the cost has gone up, you know, of everything. And so the revenue might be coming in a little higher, but so is the operational cost and expenditure has gone up equivalent, correct?
Correct.
And we held off the last couple of years because of the situation we were in and the state. We weren't fully funded for two years, so we, we held back as we should and tightened our belts, which was good.
And Cindy, you can help me with this one, but the main job categories impacted by the $15 an hour food service, obviously, paraprofessionals would be another, custodians would be another. Am I missing?
Bus drivers.
Well, not bus drivers, but...
Bus drivers are above that.
I'm... Okay, right.
We are also, we're showing all our cemetery.
Okay, that category as well. And do you remember off the top of your head, we did increase pay for substitute teachers. Do you remember what we budgeted?
We are about, we're going to be about, we're going to be about, we're going to be about, we're going to call it county, a little more, some categories, charity, a little less, some categories, and golden, we're right in there. It's going, we're going to simplify substitute categories. We've got several categories now, about four. We're going to simplify to either a certified college degree or not, and we're going to teach teachers who are certified now, who are doing a daily rate. We're going up to about $150 a day, because they do a long term, it'll be around $100 a day.
So we made a big impact, yeah.
It's a baking grade.
And then long-term.
So we feel like we're going to be competitive again in the substitute teacher market.
I can't hear anything that Cindy said. Could you please repeat it for the audience?
Yeah, I might need you to come up here and speak from the microphone because she, she said, yeah, come on up, Cindy.
Yeah, what you're talking about is, is kind of the...
And while she's coming up too, you know, working in the retail market out there, we're competing against those folks too, and they're having to do the same thing.
Right.
So, you know, those people that we're increasing, we're competing for those jobs as well. Does that make sense?
It does.
So we have to keep our employees that are engaged with us, just, we don't want them leaving just because of money.
So for people listening at home, what we're talking about is our budget does include increases for substitute pay. Dr. Sloan was talking about the difference between certified and non-certified, and just share that projected dollar amount again per day.
One of the points that our certified teachers have made to us over the years is that they get paid exactly like anybody else for a daily rate, and it takes a long-term substitute time to get that. And that's really not right. If they're certified, they should be paid more every day. So we're going to do that, and then for the long-term sub, they're going to get even more. So our, a certified teacher who does a long-term certified position for us will be right around $200 a day. For those certified teachers who are doing a day-to-day situation for us, it's going to be a, I can get you the exact figures, but a hundred and fifty-ish dollars a day. So, and then the other category of substitute teachers will be those that don't have a certification because, like I say, we're going to simplify it, and that's over a hundred dollars a day, right around a hundred, a hundred dollars a day.
We can give you those exact numbers.
I'll get those for you.
And we'll email them to you so you get them. Any other preliminary questions? Again, I know you need to dig in deeper, but anything else you can think of tonight?
That was a big one that people have been asking for.
Okay.
Now, public meetings will be in June. We'll have three public meetings in June, and our three milage public meetings in June as well.
The only other thing I'll add, you know, while we talked a lot about money tonight, we are still growing.
That's right.
That costs more.
Yes, and what did Kathy Carpenter share with us the other day? From March until recently, we've had like six hundred students?
October to March, we've registered over six hundred and fifty, the most we've ever enrolled during a school year.
So they're continuing to come, and so we have to be prepared for that.
Well, the vast majority of school systems in Georgia are...
Are decreasing.
Are decreasing.
Yeah, that's true.
In fact, if you look at the budget numbers the state gave you, because enrollment had decreased, they cut a hundred and eleven million dollars out of their budget because of that.
But their overall percentage, you were saying, in state budget is quite similar to ours.
Yeah, state budget's up eleven percent over last year. Right, right. Okay, thank you. Do we need to say?
You go right into the next item.
Yeah.
The next item, which is the tentative milage rate.
Yes, so I would like to present and say that based on input from staff and Dr. Jeff Bearden, we are proposing that the MNO milage rate will be seventeen point three, and the debt service milage rate will be one point four one eight. And we are just asking you to be aware of that, and we will adopt that in June as well.
We have to have the mandatory hearings as we always do.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
The next item on our list is the Drug Council update with Mr. Tom Cleveland.
I'll put together a few slides to keep me focused on what we're doing. I'll bring that up. And it was very timely that, you know, Support Services was here talking about their, their packages and the things they do that are so wonderful. Lindsay Shadburn is my partner in crime on the Drug Council. And so we attend the meetings, we listen to what they say. She actually went to the RX Summit, which was finally back in Atlanta again this year. I went to it two years ago virtually and learned a lot of information, a lot of changes in the world, and that's what I want to try to bring to you guys to keep y'all up on what's happening in the world today. It's not our world that we grew up in, and we've talked about that last update I gave. So the Drug Awareness Council, just to make sure we're clear on what that is, is to educate, advocate, and empower the community to prevent substance abuse across the lifespan of Forsyth County, Georgia. So we're focused on prevention. We're focused on trying to understand what's coming at us and how to fix it. All right? And I'll tell you, the last meeting we were at actually was focused on schools. We, they've heard a lot of things. I know Mitch attended the, the session that some kids spoke at, and they talk about how they see drugs at school, and they do. So we know that this stuff occurs. Big thing that's coming that we don't understand totally yet, here in Georgia especially, is fentanyl. What is it? It's a synthetic opioid, so it's made, it's not a natural substance, that is prescribed by doctors for to treat severe pain. And so a lot of older people, people that have, you know, real issues, can use this to help with their pain. That's stolen a lot of times and abused by kids, by other adults. It's also illegally made, and we'll talk a little bit about how they get their hands on that. But those are found in street drugs, they lace drugs with it. You know how drugs are, they always want that next high to be higher. And so fentanyl gives them that ability to have a higher high, and that's what they're always seeking, but it also had negative consequences. So drugs contain fentanyl, and looking at some of the overdose things, numbers that we pulled down, the overdoses have increased because fentanyl is a part of the other drugs. So we used to deal with heroin, cocaine, we'd think of those things. Fentanyl added to that is a death sentence, okay? And that's why we have to be really focused on that. You know, back in our day, smoking was the issue, cigarettes. You could smoke at school. Came alcohol. Alcohol grew in normality. THC is now becoming normal. Drugs are going to be the next thing, right? So we have to be aware of these things. And just so happens, today is Fentanyl Awareness Day. So I thought, what better day to bring that to y'all and help you understand? You can go to that website and kind of see a little more about it if you want to know more. So deadly, and you will not know it. That's the problem with fentanyl, is that it's a substance that can be absorbed through your skin, and it can kill you right away. It doesn't have to be ingested, don't have to be snorted, it doesn't have to be shot up. Can you tell which is the fentanyl pill? These pill mills are now making, being made with fentanyl, and you can't tell the difference. And if we can't, our children can't. So we have to make them aware of this. So Arizona had a very big contingency at the RX Summit, and a lot of their data we look at because they're near the Mexico border. That's where they see a lot of the drugs coming into the United States. From there, they span out across the interstates. You can watch the interstates and how the drugs flow throughout the United States. And so we have seen it here in Georgia, as we have major intersections of interstates coming to us. So these drugs come here, okay? If you look at things like marijuana, in Texas, it's twenty percent of their issue, and fentanyl's only five point two percent. That's going to change. As these drugs start moving across the country, you'll see higher numbers like Arizona has, okay? You can look at the different forms of drugs and how big fentanyl is there in Arizona. We can expect that to come here and around us, okay? Introduce you to the new drug dealer in town. You know, as we talk about technology, we love technology here in Forsyth County. We also understand the implications of that with kids on it. We heard about mindfulness training and other things where kids go out to eat and everybody's on their phone. They're so on their phone, they're doing things that parents don't know. So if I can get the word out to the parents, talk to your kids about screen time. We've said that so many times. But this is more important than ever. The deep web, the dark web, is out there, and that's where they get their drugs from. They can get out there and they have ways of ordering this stuff online. It shows up at the front door. It's scary, is what it is. And you can see the picture, that really shocked me when I read it. He's sitting there chatting with somebody else on his phone, like a lot of kids do. And these were his last texts before he died of an overdose because he wasn't feeling good. And that's all it takes. And I've shared with Wes, you know, I'm going through an emergency medicine first responder course right now, and we're looking at rolling out some AEDs to help with cardiac events across the county. And also, they're adding the overdose prevention drug to that kit because nine times out of ten, when you go to a cardiac event, it's going to be a drug overdose.
Narcan?
We can help save that as well.
Narcan?
Yeah, Narcan.
And it doesn't hurt you if you...
And that's where I'm going to hit it next, reversing overdose, naloxone. And so we have some in schools. If you weren't aware already, we did have some in our schools so that if they get into an overdose situation at school, they can help reverse that. SROs have it, police has, the sheriffs have it. So they do it all over the place. Fentanyl, the problem with fentanyl, you can go to an overdose situation at school, for example, and try to help that student. And if you're not protected with the right PPE or whatever, you can now be a part of the scene because now you've touched the fentanyl that possibly is at the scene. You have to be trained on it. You have to understand it so that you don't become part of that issue. Also, it takes multiple doses of Narcan to reverse a fentanyl overdose.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. I mean...
We've seen that.
Yeah.
Two to three sometimes.
Yeah, so is, I mean, are these, I mean, they're very helpful, but are these going to truly, I mean, I guess the elementary one, I mean, it's based on the size.
It affects, what it does is the brain kind of coats over with the oxycodones and the heroin and the fentanyl, although that brand of drug coats a receptor in the brain. It'll slow your breathing to the point you quit breathing, and that's the overdose. That's what happens. This drug actually takes that, rips it off, and it really pisses off the person who used the drugs because it's not a happy experience. They come back and they're angry. And you have to be prepared for that when you use this because they will come back alert pretty fast and be real angry.
Likely vomiting.
And you can see, we have one dose at a school for an elementary. Probably not going to have too many overdoses at elementary, hopefully. Middle school's another situation, high school's another situation, and we had a donation recently where we now have more doses on hand because we could have a big scene at a high school.
It should be a nasal spray, right?
It's a nasal spray, yes. And PPE is important when responding to that. So those are the big things about that. The second piece of this is vaping. We've talked about that over and over, and we hear about it a lot, you know, the risk. And part of my training that I'm going through right now, one thing that became very clear was how your lungs take oxygen and get it into the blood cells to move it around your body so it can make use of that oxygen. You know, you've always heard if you've been without oxygen for a period of time, you're dead. Oxygen's important. How does it flow? It flows in the lungs to the red blood cells and circulates the body. I kind of cottoned it to vaping introduces new chemicals, other drugs like THC are now being vaped and vaporized into the lungs. That's kind of like using a baggie, you know, a sheet of plastic as a coffee filter. You can't filter coffee through it. So therefore, the oxygen isn't going to filter through those coated lungs and get that oxygen into the blood supply. So it's going to start reducing the number of, the amount of oxygen you have in your blood, red blood cells. So that's why it's bad. That's the only word I can come up with. This was something that Scholastic, who does a lot of textbooks, came up with, and it made a lot of sense. So I put this because I wanted parents to be able to see it, have discussions with their student. It's not just like a breathing treatment. A lot of people think it's as safe as a breathing treatment you'd get at a hospital if you went in with COVID, pneumonia, something like that. So have a discussion with your student. And lastly, I found this article in the Los Angeles Times, and one of the conferences that I went to with Todd, we learned a little bit about this. They had a guy called the Tall Cop, and he shared a lot about what's happening in schools. How are they vaping? They're very, very intrusive, you know, very hidden things that kids are taking with them and vaping all around. And so these are the things that we need to educate parents on to look for. As you can see here, this is a picture of somebody that's got a vape in their shirt string or their hoodie string. It's part of their clothing. You may never know that until they go in the bathroom or they go out in a secluded place where they can vape. And they're odorless now, so you don't know they're doing it. And so we have to understand exactly what that is, and that could be THC they're doing and getting high off of, okay? Another one, there's you another vape. Looks like that I, I watch. You take off the wristband and it becomes a vaping mechanism. So what does it come in the forms of now? Watches, hoodies, USB drives, backpacks, phone cases, computer mouse. Those are the types of things people are using to vape with. There are all other ways to do this, and they can order the high concentrated THC, which we talked about last time, which were, you know, fifteen percent back when we went through high school, are now up to eighty, ninety, a hundred percent THC concentrations in the vape juice. And so you can get high a lot faster. It's truly a drug. It wasn't just a nuisance. It's a drug. So that's what I wanted to bring to you tonight, something very short and sweet, give you a little bit of information. Can I answer any questions about either one of those topics? Okay.
I mean, thank you for, for what you do on the Drug Council and for everyone that's working on this. I mean, this issue has always kind of scared me as being a parent and always just with caring on children and loving children, it's just, it's a scary thing. I, you know, I've heard from people that say the opposite of addiction is connection. So, you know, I really think having a proactive approach to having more connectivity, you know, connecting students with other students, you know, just helping people connect and, you know, hopefully understand, you know, the sanctity of life and that their life is important, you know, hopefully all of the connectivity and the, you know, kind of self-reflection and kind of self-love that we're looking to do.
And giving them an opportunity to talk about this topic because a lot of times, where are you going to talk about it? You're not just going to bring it up to your friends unless you're in the middle of it or thinking about it.
Well, and that's the other thing, you know, it makes me think of the digital citizenship program, right? Because I used to be, and I kind of default to this, kind of, okay, well, you're just not going to go to this site, or this site, or this site, and now we're good, you know? But they can access sites outside of my home, right? And so, you know, I think more knowledge about what this could do, what potential harm it could cause, and, you know, how to focus your eyes on what, what matters and keep your eyes focused on what matters.
Educating the parents about what's out there and how they're getting to it so they understand it, so they can be listening and be more informed about how to do this. I know when I went through some of the connection settings where people that start at Gateway go through a class, and I was able to sit in on that class a number of times, and heard the students talk about connecting. So the students went into a room, while the parents went over into another room, and we talked to them. The students actually had a conversation about these things, and they said that was something they've never done before. So that was eye-opening to me to say, get them in a room, get them connected, start talking about this topic so that they can learn the right things to be talking about and understanding how, you know, we can teach all day till we're blue in the face, but until they talk to each other, they don't get it. So more and more, as students are starting to figure this out, this is wrong, they can